I'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you ready for the?
I'm trying to get Zoom to cooperate. It's just not wanting to be nice.
Well, why don't I go through the minutes and stuff while you're getting ready? We're gonna go to three, so we'll start with the minutes from the last meeting, because everybody had a chance to look at them. And if so, do I have a motion to approve or any changes?
I'll have the motion to approve minutes.
Is there a second?
All second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item is financial for bills and payroll. Do I have a motion unless there's questions or thing to approve both bills and payroll?
I think the only question I have is, one is meant to be payroll only, right?
Payroll and end of month, probably?
Okay. Because I see the J.P. Morgan and Microsoft online at the bottom. I just didn't know if that was to be on this one or the other one.
Typically, they will put them on the end of the month, just because it's not a... They'll kind of collect all their receipts on the J.P. Morgan and then just do it as an end of the month transaction.
Doesn't matter which one of them are wrong, right?
Well, and this one is more of a direct deposit than...
Okay.
Is that the only question you had on it, Nicole?
Yeah, that's the only question I have.
Okay. Technically, pollution Mondays cannot come out of electric. It should come out of the meters. There's a meter fund.
The AMI fund, yep. Sorry, please amend that.
So Monday electric should be under AMI, not electrical. Probably that too. So the Missouri River AMI should come out of the AMI fund too?
Yes, it should. I'll double check that because that's a monthly bill, so I will look into that one.
Then maybe it isn't. Maybe the AMI fund was set aside just to...
Install load control devices?
Yep.
Okay, so then the one from Missouri River is a fee that you guys pay per month per unit that's in the Yukon.
To control them.
Right, yep.
So that would come out of the electric. Okay. Do you have any other questions? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve the payroll and bills? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Moved by Jason, seconded by John. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any asks for me, motion carries. Is it working?
Got it.
He's being awfully stubborn.
Usually they'll let you open up in the browser too.
That's what I haven't tried.
Can you scroll down on that one over there?
Sure.
Maybe there.
I'll send him an email quick. Okay. Scroll down over here.
Well, we'll keep moving on.
Yep, Paul, keep trying.
We'll start with Nicole tonight for Commissioners' reports.
Okay, I'll do airport first. Commissioners here, I went out myself, went out to the airport for a tour earlier in the week and looked at their new landing and excellent work out there. I did not know there were that many hangars out there, so went for a drive around, looked in the hangars, looked inside the airplanes. It was pretty educational for myself considering I got to ask what was this, what was that, what was this, what was that. So learned a lot about that, but they're doing really, really good work out there. And we asked a lot of questions about the usage of the airport, just from a curiosity aspect, and they use quite a bit for... I was surprised at the amount of U N D students they were using it for, but also others and others that owns the hangars for rent in those places. So I thought it was a pretty good and educational thing. They even have a simulator out there, which was really cool. So they welcome anybody at any time to go out and if you want to learn about the airport or anything like that, you're more than welcome, they'll take you for a ride too. As far as the water side of things, this is kind of new. We're looking into a potential stormwater grant, so we actually, Levi and myself and Steve and probably Abby and a few others will have a meeting about the potential of maybe getting some funds grant side wise for stormwater. So that'll be hopefully a positive aspect there. And other than that, I do not have anything else.
Okay. Paul?
We don't have a lot. We are still wrapping up load control, still have a few left. And then the M R S school that we approved last week, they did get a final number of 41, 39 students and two teachers, so they are gonna participate in that. And then we still have on economic development, we still have some openings for the LEED local training that's going on October 16th over in Mayville. That's free for anybody that wants to go to its training for aspiring elected and appointed leaders serving on boards, councils, and committees. It goes from nine to four o'clock, so I don't know of anybody yet, we still have openings for that yet. So it was a nice tour out at the airport, I enjoyed that. Nice to give a little bit more of a behind the scenes tour than what you normally get. So thanks for arranging that, Nicole. Other than that, that's all I really have.
Thank you, Paul. John?
I talked to Jay today about still getting bid put together for more of the chip seal for next, I think for next spring or early summer, on the stuff that they did this fall and the stuff they did last summer. He's also getting bid for bits for the patching for next year coming up, and I think he talked to Casey and he should still have some funds to do some of that chip seal and patching he does, but fingers crossed.
Yep. As long as you guys don't have it earmarked for other places, so.
Yeah. Hopefully get that number here before too long and we can start deciding what we want to do for next summer. Already missed you, he took a look at that window that was leaking and he's trying to get somebody to get it to fix it, but everybody locally is pretty booked up for now kind of finish up some stuff before winter hits. So he's gonna try to find somebody to get that window that was leaking fixed. But again, I think long term here, we gotta start looking at windows that haven't been fixed yet, getting those all repaired. He's gonna try to put something together on that too as well. Then I asked him about the leaking roof, Dave. They weren't able to pinpoint where that wall roof is leaking, but his suggestion, he's got a smoking roof on there anyway, but that's gonna be a project in itself, so. I drove by it and I kind of just eyeballed it, but felt really climbing up on the roof. I think it's doable, but it'll take some engineering and architectural work. You got the same, Tim Wright was able to get a quote from Paul Lincoln for doing that concrete sidewalk, and I did talk to Jay about that too, because Jay believes he can put a plate over that, but he wanted to sit down and talk with me a little bit more before 100% goes that route. And from what it sounds like, Tim said he'd be doing this work next spring instead of this fall. But we do have a cold board down, okay? We want to put that number out there, get them came to 6,500, so that would be, I think it was about 10 feet on either side of it, because they're gonna have to slope the sidewalk down, get that sidewalk back level, and then Tim would be able to slope it from that sidewalk up to his doorway and get the proper slope whenever he starts using it again. So that's kind of where that's at. Once we kind of get that all finalized, like Jay will put together something, want to make a motion to change that portion of it. I believe that's all I have for today.
Okay, thank you. Well, if you're ready, Casey, I think.
Almost, yep. Come on, be nice to me.
No worries. If you can hear me, see my screen, that is all that matters.
Yep, can you hear me? I don't think so. Yes, allow. Unmute me, please. There we go, can you hear me?
Is it on the right speaker or microphone?
I'm not sure. It's frozen now. There we go. Can you hear me okay, Cadence?
It's here, um, sounds like it's a hot one. See what's on.
Try that.
All right, can you hear me now?
Can you hear me there? Yeah, I can.
Oh, good, okay, thank goodness.
Yeah, hopefully this doesn't echo too bad. We'll see.
There we go. All right, well, the Commission is ready for you whenever you are, Cadence.
Awesome, great to hear. Well, I appreciate everybody here tonight, let me hop on, Casey, for putting this together for us. So just kind of wanting to take like a good 10 or about five to 10 minutes, just to go over the X my gov and what the different parts of the city is, can they use it for? And then we'll kind of run through, if you guys have your phones available, run through what the citizen will see, and right at the end, we'll just kind of go over the notification side of the program. So starting off, let me know when my screen comes through and we'll just make this short and sweet for everybody. Awesome. So to do, just kind of give you guys a, or you'll text my gov and what we are, so we're a two-way notification system. It's all through direct messaging. We can send out works for residents to receive information, they can request information and that gets sent back to them, as well as they can also report issues and that information being compiled and then sent to the recs department, as well as the specific people in that department. So the main differences that we have here is we aren't an app, so there's no need for citizens to download or log in or anything like that. We have a dedicated account manager for you guys and we do unlimited training, so if there's more staff that wants to be involved, we can help train them, or new departments, or provide a refresher for anybody that needs it. So between some of our conversations with Casey and Public Works, there's a few different things that we were planning on using the program for. So for the notification section, and we'll briefly kind of go over it, we were gonna use it for miss pickups, general works, any weather information for like snow removal or road issues, as well as a built-in geolocation feature for the Public Works guys to get that information out when they have roadwork going on in a specific area. We've also got the automated responses for citizens to text in to find like bill pay or projects that'll cut down our call volume into the office, as well as for the reporting feature, we were going to use it for like flooded or snow blocked roads, as well as like potholes or even outages for electrical as well. Some of the bigger things that we have there, helping with adding to our date is both number and all, that way we can get like 40, 60% of you guys' households to Starwick Instant Engagement for you guys. And we will have the broad genetic manager or dedicated account manager also there to help build out the system on the back, and then just keep helping you guys for any marketing material and help with the engagement. So just a couple fires to give you a view of what our marketing material looks like. So we work with Dunn County as well as Harrisburg, and we have to sign on Killdeer this year as well. This is kind of what they're gonna use it for, Dunn County specifically using it for just notifications, so to notify the resident, whether it's general announcements, login and important deadlines, City of Harrisburg, they're using it to kind of work residents similar to what we kind of talked about a little bit earlier. So we will also put this widget on your guys' website to help the residents opt into the system to know what's there available, as well as the database like I previously mentioned, we'll send out a welcome message, and it will look really similar to this one right here on the screen, where you guys can, it's, and it just is a welcome message, hey, if you want to receive certain information, go over here, and if you want to opt out, please type stop. So that way residents can opt out at any point in time. If you guys have your phones available, I do want to kind of give you a view of what the residents' perspective is. I've created a keyword as well as a report for the resident, or for you guys to kind of get a view of what the residents look like. You can type your phones available there.
Yep, got your cell phones? All right, they all got them out, Cadence.
I will zoom in right here for you guys. Sorry, that just cut out for me. Casey, could you repeat that? That just cut out for me.
That just cut out for you? Oh, I'm sorry, I said they got their cell phones out, sorry.
All right, sounds good. Okay, so if you guys will text in public to this 45 number, and that will give you the recording feature, and then if you want to look at the automatic response side of the system, where this is all built out, I actually don't touch this at all, you can also text in utility though. So as you guys are bringing out that information, I'll just give you a brief overview of what it looks like here on the backend. So in our law offices, what will come up for you guys in the backend, when you guys are looking at text my gov from that perspective. So it just essentially compiles this information and you can adjust this to however the, you guys want, specific questions. And then here at the bottom, you guys have a spot to attach a photo, as well as down here, this information all gets sent to a specific set of people that you guys want involved. I know we kind of talked a little bit with the Public Works guys and they split up different options for them, so when it comes to wanting to get specific information, some want the outages, some want to get reports for potholes, so you guys can break that information up And then I'm just gonna briefly walk through the backend for you guys to see the notification So here we have is you guys can log in just like a normal Facebook page or anything like that here in the backend, and you can log in through your phone, website, or computer, you guys can do that. And then right here, we have a group name and then a keyword associated with it for the residents to opt into the specific works that they want to be opted into. So you guys can have as many groups as you guys want, as well as, as few groups as you want. It's up to you guys, we have a few places that have one or two groups, others have seven, eight groups, so we would just kind of work you guys on that. And then to send out a work, in a word, all you guys have to do is select the word, type out the information, and then right here, you guys would have a send message button. And then we've also built in a scheduling feature, so you can schedule out works whenever you guys want to notify the residents ahead of time and you aren't in the office to do so, as well as a map selection feature. So each of these red dots are a address attached to a phone number. And this information you can just highlight, and then you can notify that specific set of residents by saving the location and then tying in the group name, so if it was roadwork for that specific set, and then tying a date to it, so then they don't get double messages later in the week. It will just come over, and then you can select your word that you want and then notify them accordingly. I know I moved through this very quick, is there any questions that you guys have for
How much is this gonna cost?
Did you hear that, Cadence?
I assume, yeah, I'm just pulling up the agreement right now, I just... We have you guys at 3,000 annual, and with the enhanced media with another 500, and we have a first year subsidy of 15, so your first year total's 5,000 and then the third year 500 year aftermath, and we got you guys on that three-year term. Any questions on pricing when it comes down to it? Do you want me to pull up the agreement, Casey?
Sure, that'd be great.
And this is what it would look like for you guys as well.
What is the enhanced?
Can you guys see that all right?
We, yep, we can. Nicole wanted to ask what the enhanced media package is.
Yes, the enhanced media contains extra media for you guys. We've got a full-fledged marketing team that we have for you guys, and the enhanced media contains social media posts, flyer, QR codes, promotional videos, as well as custom designs and graphics that we helped put together with our marketing team here on our end.
Sorry, guys.
That's all right. We'll keep moving on then.
I'll give you my kiss.
Yeah. All right, so, let's see, Jason, do you have anything for the Commission tonight?
Um, the only thing I have is I did hold off doing any headstone work on the cemetery since we don't have any money in our budget for this year.
The only thing I have tonight for you guys is the trees are starting to come in, so hopefully...
Hey, Casey, can you hear me over there?
Yep, I can hear you, sorry about that.
Don't worry. Can they still see my screen?
They can, yep.
All right, and then, did I get cut off or did they get that answer for the enhanced media kit?
They got part of it. Yeah, the enhanced media kit's gonna be any, yeah, any marketing type things that they put together for us.
Yep, we just found putting that on there just helps get the best sort of engagement for the city, because we want you to succeed as much as we can.
Okay. Any other questions for him?
That was a great question, what else you guys have for me?
They're pretty quiet, Cadence.
So getting the residents aware, is this something that's part of that media package?
The question that John has for you, getting the residents notified of this means of communication, that's just part of the media tool, right, Cadence?
I'm not quite understanding you when you mean part of the media tool.
Or part of the media package, John? Yeah, part of the media package, sorry.
So we have a base that gets you guys the widget and then two flyers, and that's kind of where we start, as well as the database, but the enhanced media care package just helps the involvement, the engagement that much more. We just found there's been more engagement and better success from places that do have that involved. Did that answer your question?
I understand. I'm curious to how the media package would increase that engagement, what is different than that and without having it?
Did you hear that, Cadence?
Yeah, yeah, so the difference is mainly is the personalized social media posts, because we know that people are out on different platforms, as well as the QR codes are a really big one, so you guys can post those around town, and we put those together. So you guys can post those around town and we put those together on our end and then the promotional videos just shows the residents how the tool works as well as different ways that they can be engaged. So that's kind of how we've upped the engagement when it comes down to it because putting a few flyers out is great. We just found with the more flyers, putting your guys' city seal on it and a few things like that has just helped with the engagement. That answer your question?
Yep.
Just so I'm all on the same page as you guys were, we were looking for approval on this tonight, correct Casey?
Yeah, mull over it and kind of decide. I know communication has been one of the things that has been preached, especially after the street project that just happened a couple weeks ago, month ago. You know, we had heard quite a few rumblings about residents not being very appreciative of the lack of communication even though we put it out on our Facebook page about that street project. And we thought this would be a really good route to utilize for different projects and to get the word out about things that might be, you know, problematic for residents' travel, for residents in general, just to give heads up on things. So with Cadence put together a pretty good presentation, I thought it was, you know, kind of nice to show you guys. I thought maybe you'd find some, find some value in it, I guess, so.
Is there any other questions for Cadence? Okay. Well, we'll thank you for the presentation, but we'll probably talk about it a little bit later and we'll, Casey will let you know how it goes.
Awesome. That's great. I just wanted to remind you, Casey, we got that agreement tied to the 11th, so this is a reminder, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Appreciate you letting me hop on here and have a great rest of the night, everybody.
Thank you. You too.
The only thing that I had for the commission tonight is that some of the trees came in today, so we'll start looking here in the next couple weeks to start getting those put out. And we had 44, I believe that it was, that residents have asked for, so. I think that's the number, was 44.
That sounds right.
All right. JR, do you have anything for tonight?
I think it's not on the agenda.
Okay, Casey?
I have two things. First thing that I wanted to talk to you guys about was the load control. Paul had mentioned it a little bit ago. We have, last I talked to Abby, we have about 39 homes or businesses that need to have load control boxes installed. It is past the deadline. They were to be in by October 1st per your guys' rate sheet. If they weren't installed by October 1st, we are to assess a $50 late fee per your guys' rate sheet. We had quite a few reach out to us the very last week that appointments were available and the schedule was full for majority of those two days. Friday was completely full, Thursday maybe one or two open slots. We would like to know your thoughts on possibly opening up one more week, maybe two, two days for sure, maybe a third day in order to finish up the rest of these load controls or give the opportunity to get them done. Tanner is willing to come out on a Thursday and Friday again. But yeah, we, after that, we, we would like to start charging per the fee that's placed on the schedule though. So we've sent out letters, Abby has taken the time to research phone numbers and give phone calls, late messages. She's, we feel we've put in quite a bit of effort to, to get this done, so.
My thought is if they have not called in by now to get it scheduled, they should be assessed. Anybody that's taken the time to call in and at least get on it, on the list, that they shouldn't be assessed.
So the 39 that are left, is that part of the list that still needed done or is that 39 that they haven't, like responded at all?
Some of that 39 responded like the very last day. Yep, or close to.
Would be less than that after.
Right, yep.
So how many haven't responded at all?
I'd have to ask Abby.
Looks like.
Looks like 39.
38, they're up there.
They're up there too.
Looks like 38, looks like there was only one that called in on 10-1 and the stars have contacted to schedule out or after this. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight that have scheduled, nine that have scheduled, so 30 that basically have not contacted back.
I agree, if they haven't contacted the city by now, I do agree that if we start charging that fee, if they've attempted to get it scheduled and we just haven't been able to coordinate it, I don't, I feel we can work with those individuals. If they've made note of Tampt, they've gotten letters, they've gotten phone calls. One letter that was sent back and they did, they readdressed it or did something and found the homeowner and that one didn't come back, so I guess, I think that we've done what we can do. I don't know what else we can do, you know? So maybe the, maybe the field give them to call in. I was talking a little bit with Abby and I thought one, one alternative we may give is, is if they, if we put out there that they, because our next billing goes out when the 20th.
They, right, yep.
So we could, we could give those last few, a week or so here, give them one last opportunity to send it in and if they don't have it scheduled by then, then they're going to get, they're going to get the fee. I, I don't know how, how we could be any more generous than we have on this thing. So, you know, I kudos to all those that, that did get it done and of course to Abby for all the work she's done. She's put a lot of work in calling and contacting these people. So I got a feeling that if she hasn't been able to contact these, they just don't want to be contacted, so.
There's only one on here that I think maybe, because it looks like it's an old name, so maybe the house got changed that I'm aware of, but.
She did, she said there was one house that might have exchanged hands, so they maybe kind of got caught in the mix, so. But if that'd be the case, we can always work with that obviously.
Great. And actually, there might be less than 39 because there's one, two, three, four, five that are off the list that she has crossed out, so.
She told me that there was 35 left.
Yeah, 35. So 35 based on this list with nine that are, so less than 30. Like I said, my suggestion would be that we assess, we don't even give them a grace period, goes on the next bill. And if they call in after the next bill by the first, then they'll get it off for the next. But we did say the first.
According to your rate sheet, it says first of October 2024 they need to be in.
So people need to realize you can't just install it and then snap a figure either.
Right. So they'd get billed, my suggestion is they did build this month or basically, but then after that, if they call in, say that before the first of November, they could get billed the next month.
So it's going to be $50 every single month until they do it?
You started on this one year over a year already.
It's taken 1910. 1910 we started on this. It's been a long time. People have run more than enough times. It's been a long time.
And we, we started the letter process in like the second week, I think July 10th was the date that I wrote up, wrote up the letter.
And that doesn't include all the letters that went on prior to that, where it's passed. So plus the news, the banner, you know, it's, it's, it's been put out there, so not to say that you, somebody maybe missed it, but.
And you may think $50 is a lot per month, but in reality, it's costing us a lot more than that because if our demand charge goes up in these months, we have to pay whatever that is and everybody has to pay that higher rate for the whole month. And sometimes in the peak months are, the demand charge is the same price as what we're paying for electricity.
I think the $50 generous, I would probably move more because it needs to be done. Everybody pays for it, like Levi says in the long run. If we can't control it, we're going to start paying more.
Do we have a motion?
We need a motion.
We do need a motion. It's in there, but, or do you want it in stone or do you want to, is that the direction you want? I think Casey just needs, you guys make a motion or we have a gentleman's agreement that that's the direction we're going. John, your thoughts?
Well, you said we already have something for October 1st, right? Are we talking more people have contacted that bill situation?
Mm-hmm. Yep, per your guys' rate sheet, it was updated, last time it was updated was December of '23. And on there, it's got $50, you know, a $50 fee per residence or business that doesn't have load control installed. So to start October 1st of '24.
And we know for sure these people on the list have property here?
We sent out to, Jim had a spreadsheet, he had an Excel spreadsheet of the addresses that weren't completed after the last electrician was in town and that's the list that we went off of. So as of right now, all of these individuals have bills that are sent out to them.
So they do have current accounts, they have those addresses and they're not responding?
Mm-hmm. And even, you know, even if they, even if people have a gas water heater, we just need to know that.
Right.
That's, you know, a lot of them were taken off the list because they had gas water heaters. Don't need a load control for that.
That's why they're not responding, because they assume they don't need to because they have a gas water heater.
Mm-hmm.
The one thing is if they start getting a $50 fee, maybe they will call and ask or say, I have a hot water, I have a gas heater. Well, okay, then, you know, you could say if you'd have done that 12 months ago, we would, we would be off the list and it wouldn't have been bugging you, so. And maybe it comes down to the communication thing, but I think we've set up more than one meeting that if you have a gas water heater, you're not included. So I know people don't listen to the meetings, but we can, you know, the word gets around, you know, so.
I think that's technically not one, just place to get.
I guess I'd be on board with the people who have contacted the city home, but first that they would be, what do you have to say?
Jason?
Yeah, we've set it up, so.
Okay, and that's what we'll, we'll do.
Okay. Thank you guys. The other item that I wanted to touch base with you on, we discussed this at the very end of last, the last meeting, it's regarding a leave of absence for John Hams. He sent in a formal request later during the meeting on September 16th. His letter says, Dear City Commission, I am writing to formally request a 90 day or the remainder of my leave of absence for medical issues, starting and ending dates to be determined. I may be late asking for leave of absence because I received conflicting dates, I previously submitted a doctor's note and hope this note will be sufficient. I am happy to help or advise my coworkers on any current or upcoming assignments to ensure a smooth transition in my absence. If you need any additional information or advice while I am away, I can be reached any time of the day of my current phone number. At the end of my leave of absence, I plan to retire when my date of leave of absence ends. Please inform me of these dates, consider this my two week notice for the end of my employment. Thank you for allowing me to work as long as I have. Sincerely, John Hams. I reviewed the documents that we had sent him when this first started and his leave of absence was per your guys' initial motion, his first FMLA leave, sick leave, vacation leave, and then part of his leave of absence was concluded on the 13th of September, if I remember correctly. I did the math for the remainder of the absence, if you guys want to allow it, and that would take him into January 2nd. So that's what he's requesting.
So if you guys want to approve it, all I need is a motion to approve, which we had talked a little bit about the last time.
Could be pretty much approved the last time, couldn't we? Just didn't have a date?
We didn't have a date and we didn't officially do it. And there is no pay with the leave of absence, it's just insurance and so forth is covered for him.
So first he has FMLA.
That's already gone. He's used all that.
Yep. The, the initial motion that was made was to allow so many days, it was like 138 days or something to that effect. Well, that went through his vacation time, sick leave, 12 weeks of FMLA, and then because of the extent of the motion, we had to dip into the leave of absence. We used about 12 or 13 days worth of that.
You said any date was January, what again?
January 2nd.
I'll make the motion to approve his leave of absence.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any asks for me? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Anything from the sheriff's office tonight? Steve, he gives a couple things for us.
All right, we've got two things on the agenda tonight. One of them is the water sewer pipeline project that we put in, there's a contract adjustment for the contractor which lowers contractors total amount by $12,744. And that was due to, we put in some more, trench more pipe than we originally planned and then he did less open cut pipe and then there's two valves he didn't put, get put in, so that was just kind of balancing the, his amount and then lowering it by $12,000. So we just need this decrease signed and now get submitted with the rest of the paperwork for close out his water project.
Just need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Jason. Is there any other discussion?
There's no way it changed the quality of the work. You talk about a couple valves, was a good reason. They were needed or?
They were needed, yes. There was a couple bends, a couple bends that didn't get put in, but even with the poly pipe, he was able to secure the pipe instead of actually putting a bend in, was a change of money by not putting a bend in. It's a pretty good, pretty good balance. And Neil said he would sign it, so he hasn't signed it yet, but hopefully not, Friday he would sign it.
We have some leverage on him.
Oh, you got to vote, sorry, sorry.
We have leverage on him too, so. Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any asks for me? Motion carries. All right.
All right, so the second part, we got Jesse back for the stormwater master plan presentation update. He's going to talk about where we're at and lighten up the report. Maybe some of you haven't worked here when Jesse came around first time. Maybe some of you haven't worked here when Jesse came around the first time. He's a stormwater expert, he's an expert in working on the Stormwater Master Plan.
That's just fine. I don't look, so I'm doing it.
Steve told me to bring sixteen, and I brought eight, so, anyway. Good evening, everyone. So, what I handed out tonight is a draft report of the Stormwater Master Plan. What I'd like to do is maybe flip through, go over very high level, talk through a few things in it, some of the high points, and then ultimately let you all take it, look through it, write down any questions you might have, or certainly asking that came up tonight as well, but after the meeting, take it, look through it, write down any questions you have, get those to me, hopefully can help answer those, potentially add more detail to the report if certain questions need to necessitate that. Otherwise, we just have a few thing of items, a few technical sections we're gonna add to this, we add more for just record keeping, somebody looks at in the future. But then, yeah, button this up and hopefully close it out in at least the recording phase this fall. So, why don't we start, I'll try to guide us through this, at least we have page numbers, so that should help, but you get past, once you get past the table of contents, you'll see there's a brief executive summary, just very high level, and then it has a larger sheet, which is summarizing the recommendations, and we'll talk through those as we get into the actual report. So we think we can kind of skip through probably a lot of the early stuff in here. We have the introduction, a lot of the background information for the report, and then chapter one. In chapter two, we talk more about existing conditions, a lot of this, maybe boring to talk about tonight, but we'll find out what we have. Let's see where I can find it. One of the figures in here. Okay, next section. All right, so let's, chapter three, that's, let's try and look it up, starting on page twenty-three. This is where we get into more of the existing drainage system inventory, system review. Somebody may recall, we did put together different analyses and figures documenting flooding on, flood depths on roadways, and classifying those by the depth of water over the road centerlines. And then we also looked at potential structures at risk, both primary structures and secondary structures like projects. So those, those figures for existing conditions are in this section, and then we also have a summary, that there was a figure provided by the city, or I shouldn't call it a figure, more markups of various areas in the city that had been marked up. And here, that's figure three-two, marked up to show areas that the city has received complaints, drainage-related complaints, or city staffs have observed issues. So those are kind of summarized just geographically on figure three-point-two, and then you find the figures, three-point-three and three-point-four, that's where we, three-point-three looks like this, if you can see it. Kind of had different coloring over all the different roadways, and yellow being zero to six inches of flood depth over the centerline of the road, orange being six inches to a foot, and then red shading indicating streets width greater than a foot. And existing conditions, this is showing a five-year rainfall event, pretty significant area on the, on the west side of the railroad tracks, and then the most significant flooding is actually up at Second Avenue, Seventh Street, we sort of refer to as the northeast area in the master plan, and then down at Royal Avenue. And similarly, you can see on figure three-point-four shading, all those different structures where we shaded red structures, those are primary structures that were denoting as being potentially at risk for flooding packs, and then purple boxes on a figure are secondary structures. And we did point out that we're showing the mobile homes as being at risk, likely those are elevated up to ground, but some limitations in this analysis, that's why we're calling those potentially at risk, because we're using just LiDAR topographic data to determine what the finished floor elevations of those homes would be. Any questions on any of that? A lot of that's repressur, but it's been a while, so we haven't seen this in...
Down here on First Street Southeast, down towards south of the armory there, there's a ditch that shows quite a bit of water in it.
Yeah, yeah.
And it goes east, is, if we plan on developing that in the future, what can we do with that water?
Yeah.
Because apparently, it must not be, there must not be enough culvert there to run that to the east, or, so it sits there?
Yeah, we looked at that ditch a couple times along, so it's very draining water down, and that might just be capillaries on the group along the, along there.
One part of it is, because all that water from the other side of the road, from Main Street and Seventh Avenue Southwest, flows underneath into there.
And just culvert needs to be replaced in charge there, yeah. Yeah, that inundation area is not something that we particularly looked at improving, just because it wasn't necessarily tied to those areas, but it's something I've envisioned in the model that we have, if you guys were just looking at. Supply water improvements to reduce that inundation. If that's something important for the city, it's certainly did have to be, so they can put fire hose, or, sure, or an extra facility, yeah.
Part of the evaluation went through it, trying to figure out what kind of, what size of pipes we need to upgrade everything, to fix all the flooding, but the pipe size has got so huge, it's a little green, that we wouldn't be able to put in the ground and get any other utilities around them. So then we looked at other areas where we just put in some storm ponds and stuff, kind of solved a lot of that. But I think once you can take this report and keep it in mind as, as things happen around town and other development stuff, and plan for ponds wherever you can.
We've already used it, on planning and zoning side, where they've said, okay, somebody's putting in a building, or they want to put an access road, what do we need to put in? What size pipe we need to put in? So that they're trying to be proactive as we move forward as well.
So if there are more questions right now on those figures, if we move on to page thirty-five, this is getting into the master plan recommendations. We'll get along those lines, Levi. So recommendation number one is stormwater standards adoption, so recommending that the city develop and adopt at least simple stormwater standards to guide some developments, well, to guide developments and provide some guidance to developers or any property that's being redeveloped, newly developed. So we get that as a, as a recommendation, and we'll get to, get to it in a bit here, but I did draft some standards that are included in Appendix A, and so maybe let's wait to look at those, but before we get through these five recommendations quick, let's look at those standards. So recommendation two is regional detention improvements, what Steve mentioned. So we are calling it regional detention, as somebody may recall this, but really they aren't regional detention ponds. Usually detention ponds are where you take stormwater runoff directly into a pond and then slowly release it. These are really surge ponds, so because the storm sewer system is overtaxed in large rain events, or even fairly small rain events in some cases, what we're doing really is tying these ponds into the storm sewer system, so when it gets overtaxed, it can outlet water into the pond, fill that pond up, taking some of that burden off of the pipes, and then hold it until, really until the storm sewer system drains down, has capacity, then it'll take that water back over the ponds north to the river. So, really, we're kind of flip-flopping, where today, the water builds up on the roadways, has nowhere to go, now instead, we would create a little more capacity in the pipes by giving the pipes an outlet into pond, get the water up the street, and then get it to the river. And again, as Steve mentioned, our first approach was, what pipes do we need to upsize to get the water to the Gooch River faster, and to reduce the burden on the street, and just to, really, there were several challenges. The terrain being number one, you need such large pipes to move much water because it's so flat. And then with those larger pipes, we ran out of depth to cover over the top, if we went shorter and wider, we ran into utility complex, and then things like the railroad crossing and other things, just really made that option feasible. So, this surcharge or regional pond approach seemed, seemed to make sense. We're proposing in that recommendation, three, one on the south side of town, sort of by the softball complex, just northeast of the softball diamonds. On North Pond, our primary location is on the courthouse property, that's the focus area for the North Pond in the report, but we do lay out some potential alternative ideas for that pond if, if it's maybe not feasible or deemed undesirable to have that, and then an East Pond over by the school property inside the center. So then, moving on, on page thirty-seven, we have recommendation number three, which is inlet and lateral improvements. So what we mean by that is, really, a lot, or most of the intersections through town, we found was that the inlets are undersized, they're small inlets, very prone to clogging, and then the laterals, which are the smaller pipes that connect the inlets to the larger storm sewer pipe, a lot of those are very small, some of the connections are a little blocky, and just a lot of that is aging and likely losing efficiency, so really what this, or what this recommendation is, is that as road, road improvement projects go on throughout the city, or maybe there's a need to do other work at an intersection, replacing those inlets and some of those smaller lateral stormwater pipes with larger inlets, less prone to clogging, and slightly larger pipes would help reduce the burden at the intersections and get the water into the storm sewer system. But what we found, one thing we found was that, in some cases, if you could just get more water into the system, there actually would be a bit more capacity. Recommendation number four on page thirty-eight is just, we have some localized storm sewer improvements to those larger main lines or trunk lines of the stormwater system. Those are better shown on figure four-point-one than described, but really, it's just some of those local storm sewer improvements. And then finally, recommendation number five deals specifically with Royal Avenue, and in that case, we did look at several different options. We looked at the potential to tie in a gravity storm sewer, really just doesn't work with the grades, not feasible to get a storm sewer pipe in that area to drain out. We looked at increasing the horse main, the lift station and horse main to pump more water out. Again, just became infeasible very quickly, very expensive very quickly. And so what we, what we ended up landing on was a curb, installing a curb cut near the inlets between, I think it's six thirteen and six fifteen, Royal Avenue, yep. So installing a curb cut and then sort of like a grass swale, a small shallow ditch, last gate in between those yards, to, to connect essentially immediately south down to Seventh, the northern ditch on Seventh Avenue. So, really just allows for a second outlet from Royal Avenue, and we found that in the model, that showed a relatively significant improvement in some of those rain events to Royal Avenue. So, again, maintaining the existing inlets, existing lift station and horse main, but adding a second outlet. Also relatively inexpensive, relatively inexpensive in terms of infrastructure, but also requires coordination with private landowners and potential challenges there.
So if you're dumping more water there, if you're already full coming from the west, how does that, how does that handle that? How full is that culvert, or that pipe?
And do you mean outside of?
Yeah.
The ditch?
Yeah.
So, we did find that Seventh Avenue ditch is overly taxed, especially on, so you get, you get to a certain rain, rain event, right, like a hundred-year storm event, and just every, everything's overwhelming, so your potential for improvement becomes more and more limited. But on smaller rain events, two-inch, two-and-a-half-inch, one-inch rain event, where there, today are notable issues on Royal Avenue, in those cases, there should be more than enough capacity in that ditch to take that extra flow. Yeah, and I don't...
I guess I just see all that water down by the armory, why is it sitting there if that pipe's supposed to be able to handle it? If that, if that pipe isn't running full, I don't know anything about it, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
If that pipe isn't running full, well then...
Yeah.
Why, why do we have ponding down by the armory?
I'm trying to remember the exact, the exact reason, just let me see here. By the armory, it has been dumped across the south side of the road. Yeah, I think, I think that there's a high point between like the Royal Avenue area and over by the armory, just trying to remember.
Yeah, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so I, I think from the armory, it goes to the north ditch on Seventh, goes east a little ways, and then south, whereas this...
So you're saying that we've got water going south over there?
Yeah. I think so. I think it connects to the south ditch. I need to, I need to review and remember this, but admittedly, don't remember the exact culvert right there, but...
So in reference to him, we go down Armory Downs, that county road to where, like, Royal, and then there's, Mike Cress's house is on the corner, so they have a culvert going north-south, but there's not one going east-west, and so he's something, some pumping his, his yard out all the time when it rains, and so I'm wondering why we don't have a culvert going east-west over there, and I'm wondering maybe that Armory type thing will flow away?
It wouldn't go anywhere east-west, because if you look, previously, that ditch wasn't filled in, but that landowner filled in pretty much all of that ditch on the east side of the road a few years ago. So all the way from where Pulse Road is at...
Yeah.
To where Cotton lives, that all got filled in. So there's nothing that could go through there.
I'll get you a better answer, I just think you need to remember. One, one thing, see, I remember, I think this goes here, and there's a pipe south, and then it goes in this southern ditch. As you can see, there's a lot more water in this south ditch.
But how much, how big is that pipe?
This one, or this one going to the south?
Right, right.
I don't remember. We have it.
Mine just, you know, you got a major ditch, you got a big ditch, then you would think a lot of this water would, if it was going from here to there.
For sure.
And I was thinking at first that it was going, you know, before I saw this, that it was going completely... And I was thinking at first that it was going, you know, before I saw this, that it was going completely through there, but it's not.
But you're having all of this, plus all of this.
Yeah.
Plus all of this, all going.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And it primarily goes on the south side, where this connection on Royal tie into the north.
That water that comes through here, comes down here and goes back.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Play baby fishing.
Gives you a little storage in that ditch.
This side ditch must not be very deep. No. Can't because it doesn't show like there's any water. So we go back, just running the water in. You can hear, you can look here, there's all the water in. Other than that, it doesn't really matter at all. It's just, it doesn't even back right there. Can't be handling a lot of it. But then I don't know how big this is either, you know, so. Not going up here.
This might help you too.
You guys, you guys got the topographic map on.
This might help you, Paul. So this is the elevation changes.
Yeah.
So the orange, or the yellow is eight hundred and seventy-two and the red is nine thirty-one.
You see the darker color, the higher the ground.
There's not a lot of change. There. Yeah, there's not much change there. That would be page thirty.
Twenty.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, and I can, when, like on the computer, if I zoom into this area, then it'll refresh that gradation so that we can see more variation here.
And this, I assume all of this is getting put in with the ArcGIS for the, for the.
Sure, absolutely. We can add that, that topographic information as well.
Just shut it off. There's a switch on the backside.
I don't speak Morse code. I'm trying, yeah. Is that the one thing you don't do? Yes. Five letters, that's not one of them.
You just know SOS.
Yeah, I'm starting to remember the other two R. I used to see a diagram where they actually explain all of them.
So if you skip way towards the, I guess this would be the last two, two big figures, figure five point one, which would be on page, it'd be page forty-seven. So figure five point one is showing that five-year flood inundation where we focus on the streets again. And so not that easy in this package to compare two figures, I guess. But if you were comparing this to the existing conditions, you'd see a lot more orange, a lot more red in the existing conditions, whereas this is showing the city with all the master plan recommendations put into place. So ultimately, one of our goals was to reduce all that street flooding to a foot or less, which is essentially a goal of removing all of the red. The only place that we were not able to fully do that is in that northeast area by Second Avenue and Seventh Street. We did recommend improvements there. Ultimately, it's just a, it's a very challenging space to capture the water. We did it out, several limitations, but we did make it noticeable better.
Cause that one, it goes, it dips down so far.
Exactly. Yeah. So just, just really challenging. But like I said, a lot better. The only other red here is, is the bridge over the river, and that's, that's really, you should just delete that. It's kind of weird. The bridge is high and dry. The surface is reading the river, so.
And that'll change in a few years anyway.
Then that next figure, figure five point two is is the hundred here, showing the structures. Again, hard, hard to graphically know what the difference is, but in the report, it's more clear in a table. We also have the legend here. State the number of structures that are potentially at risk. And again, a notable, notable improvement, though I would say the recommendations ultimately, the big thing is the reduction that they provide to flood and taxiing or common events. One inch rainfall events up to maybe three or so inches. Once you get to these five, six inch rain events, it's just a lot of water. So certainly challenging to get rid of it all, but it does, even in those large events, the recommendations make it better. Hopefully your reports aren't falling apart like mine.
They're not. Not yet. They might be after a few days.
So if you flip back, a couple pages past the, those last figures to appendix A, you'll see those draft stormwater standards. So this is just sort of me getting a crack at some typical standards, some standards that seem applicable to Hillsborough. Just to guide, to provide a guide of basic stormwater specification for site development, redevelopment. This would be a section, this isn't, I guess necessarily intended to be taken straight out of this and adopted. Perhaps it could be. So this would be something, personally, that I take input from the city before we finalize this. Hopefully make this a little bit better. We started out by just having that recommendation that, hey, Hillsborough should adopt standards, but it didn't, it didn't make sense to me to just tell you to adopt standards. It made more sense to say, here's some standards that you could adopt. So this is my craft.
And this will help planning and zoning, because they already talked about it.
Yeah.
Give them some guidelines to go from.
And then anybody, you mentioned like a pipe or maybe approach culverts or something. I don't have anything for that in here, so if that's, like maybe you can run this by them. And if that's something they'd like, I can absolutely add some standards to those.
Well, and that was just because they asked, somebody was going to be building, putting an approach in, and they wanted to make sure that if, we had reached out to Steve and just said, okay, what is it? What, what, what size pipe do we, does this landowner need to put in if he's putting in an approach here? So we're not causing water backup to anybody else.
Yeah. I remember talking to Steve about that now.
So maybe that's just something that we put in that
Yeah.
we need engineering recommendations for, so, but let them figure that out, so.
Absolutely. And then with those standards, I did include a recording and certification section. Let's see, that's something for the city and planning zoning to decide if it's as you want. Pretty typical to require sealed engineering document. Essentially verifying that what's being recommended isn't going to negatively impact the system.
Right.
And we're, we're really not asking for anything very complicated here. These are pretty simple, basic standards. Pretty, sort of the street standard, I guess I'd say. But yeah, certainly take input on that. And then the last, last bit here, appendix E, appendix B. So these are cost estimates for the various, various improvement. Really for the three ponds broken up, we have the general inlets and laterals, Royal Avenue. And then we separated out the northeast area, where that, that infrastructure that's being recommended is a little different, a little unique. And so isolated that we separated it. Before the report is finalized here this fall, this, this is something I do plan to go through again. First put these together a few months ago. Had, or been opening things like that since then. So this is something I'll go through and try to feature group a little bit. But we do have a pretty large contingency range on these. We gave it a negative ten percent, very positive thirty-five percent contingency range, so. Yeah, that's, that's the stormwater plan in a nutshell. Don't really expect you to have questions tonight, but if you have more, you have some good ones already.
You're not making friends with the economic developers with this plan, okay, that much. You're not making friends anywhere on that. Unfortunately.
I don't know how often you do make friends with water.
Moves down.
So if anybody has comments, things that come up, additional things you'd like to see added to this, appreciate the feedback. Hopefully, hopefully button it up and. Why, some useful information, but say.
Would you like to set a date and we can get the final one out? Yeah, comments back in a couple of weeks and finalize it. Unless there's something.
Yeah.
Paul, I will follow up with you once we give you a better clarity on that.
Yeah.
Have you investigated any like under parking retention systems?
Yeah, especially with the, so we, we didn't explore it as a large tail option. There, I just, it's expensive. It's really quite expensive. But we did explore it and maybe it's still a possibility for that courthouse location. Where they have some, I guess some current plans. We're kind of showing the whole area being a pond, so maybe there's a middle ground where we can utilize some of that space with underground storage.
Right, but I have, you have the courthouse and front plants, planning is only really part of my.
Yeah.
But we did look at, you know, taco lots in different areas, foot storage, like under you can roll it over there and stuff. But you have to take up such a big area that if you need to buy out some others and for the pond or something.
Yeah, the underground storage is, yeah, it gets expensive really fast. To get a large volume, you need so many chambers and such a large area.
Doing it piece by piece, it probably makes a lot more sense.
Yeah. Yeah.
Trying to do a larger area is probably not.
Right, exactly. If it's just for your site, to mitigate the impacts of your site, it's, it's possible, but yeah.
How deep, how deep would that pond have been by the courthouse?
I would say that one was around five feet.
The ponds are all planned to be dry pond, so they wouldn't be anything done but the storm sewer pipe, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, that was basically.
And that covered the whole area there? About, kind of looked like it, the picture.
Yeah, because the storm sewer trunk line runs right through that drainage space today. So really what we were going to do was cut it on both ends, excavate out the area. So that storm sewer trunk line would dump in, build a pond, dump right back into where it currently goes. So it was a, it's a, it's a perfect scenario for a surge pond, pond, other than they have other plans for the property.
Depending on the theme, it looks like at this, with all this, there's other plans for a lot of places?
Yeah, people don't see the plan on stormwater.
No.
It's a dream. Any other questions?
Appreciate the work and.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll reach out if you have any questions, comments.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And like Nicole said, I think we've got some funds, possibly with emergency management, some FEMA money. So Steve and Abby and I will work on trying to get some of that figured out, see if we can get some of those. So. All right. There's no changes on the B C tickets as of right now. So go into the old business and the armory rental and damage deposit. Did we, those that had potential individuals, did we reach out to them and see if they're willing and able? Or if they want to do a dry run?
For cleaning services?
For cleaning, yeah.
Molly responded to me, so I need to get a list of things over to her that would be expected typically after a, a big cleanup. So yeah, I gotta get that over to her, but she was interested. Yeah, Mary hadn't gotten back to me. I left a message, so.
We have potentials. It's better than we had. So as far as the contract, has everybody had a chance to look at it? Being that we don't have numbers, do you want to hold off and wait on the deposit change? But we had one person that was signed up, are looking at renting, but we said to hold off, right?
I believe so.
Yep.
One's ready to rent, so.
Yep, one had approached Abby to rent between last meeting and this meeting, so, yeah. Abby just, it's far enough out where she asked her to hold off until the new contract is ready to go.
Which we said we'd hold the date, but not.
We have time to wait one more meeting and see if we can get an exact number. Let's look at the other community.
I, I believe so. I'll ask Abby right now.
If we don't, say maybe pass something temporarily in there, you know, increase it, but not.
Well, JR, could we put, instead of in the contract, can you say refer to our rate sheet? So then.
Change the contract too, it just takes a second, so it's.
So then the contract would be approved and we just change the rate sheet based on? That'd be easier than changing the full contract all the time, wouldn't it? Or have it where they just write it in based on what the rate, what the. The damage or the deposit, we would make sure we add that onto our rate sheet. So then, and they would blank on the contract and you would, then they would fill that out in the office that, okay, this is what the rate sheet says, this is what the deposit is. She did, except for the, they left the, the price, the bottom on there, uncompletes a hundred dollars per item.
There, I'll look to see when the next.
I thought it was December, but.
I think it is too. I, I don't feel like there's.
I just knew that somebody came in and wanted to sign, so.
Yeah.
Thoughts, Paul? I guess I, if you have somebody coming in, I'd just let them do it what we've been doing. Until we decide what we're going to do. No sense fully am up if we got somebody that wants to print it, so.
Right.
Just maybe, maybe we just have to be a little bit more proactive at getting somebody over there. You know, we haven't really decided that either, who is going to check it, if we were going to have on-call staff check it, or how we're going to do that. So until we address that, you know.
Well, Zach's here tonight. Would, would you guys come in for on-call to check the water treatment plant and the stuff on Saturdays and Sundays? Like what time is normal that you guys check it?
I prefer the morning, as early as possible. Floods not always running in the morning, kind of baser on that. But I tell them, really the better case, there is an issue, you can take care of it in the morning. But I prefer for that, but it's not always that common case. Maybe really, yeah. Maybe early, yeah, in the middle of the plants, out in the front, yeah. Sometimes it shuts off at seven o'clock in the morning before you can go out to. It's not, it's not an exact time.
Right.
I think we say for Saturdays, we might be able to like eight and a half. So that's kind of there, but as far as Sundays.
Right.
Sporadic.
Because we're just trying to figure out. We thought if you guys, basically all you have to do is, somebody would go check to make sure the armory is, looks clean. You wouldn't have to clean, just is it clean or not clean? And then call whoever we get to come in and clean. So we're just trying to figure out, without getting somebody else involved, if we can get whoever's on-call to go do that.
No, and then for us, that, that we tell them is, I guess, for me, it's easy around the case. Five minutes to do that, one of the, the father hours. You would want to schedule it or whatever.
Right, and that's what we thought, it'd be kind of whenever they come in to make sure the water treatment plant's running, you can check it at the same time.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like there's an event in there for a while.
Okay, so we can hold off on it then?
Yeah. I did forget to let you guys know, the school's going to be cleaning the floors over there over the school break, seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth.
Waxing the floors?
Mm-hmm, yep, doing floors.
Of December, is it?
Of, no, of October.
October, okay. No, just the gym. Which maybe we could hire them to do that, but I don't think we could do that with Mayville State. We'd have to coordinate with them to try to get the hallways done. Okay. Anything else on the armory? Then we'll go on to the budget, final approval.
Anybody have any general questions? Like, what is the difference when it has the 2023 and then the anticipated like the 2024 and then some of the 2025 column? Some of them have numbers and then some of them don't. So I'm not sure how to read that.
Sure, here, hold on just a second. We'll get to a page that I think you're talking about. Are you talking about something like this?
Yeah, so, yeah, so it'll have like that requested final, but then some of the other ones don't have those?
Sure, so it depends on where you're looking, so we'll, we'll cover like the general fund right now. I'm going to scroll up. Every time you look at each fund in this budget, it starts with your revenues and it ends with your expenses. So because the general fund is so large, we have a few pages for revenues, so I'm just going to go up here. For your revenues, it has your actual revenues for '23, that's your historical, or soonest historical. This estimated revenues for '24 is what you guys set for your budget for this year. So this would have been the budget numbers that you approved in October of '23 for the '24 year. Not saying that we're guaranteed to get all those dollars, but you have an educated estimation of what you'll be getting. And then your estimated revenues for '25 is what my educated estimations are for, for the '25 year. Yep, what makes it different from your expenses is I, there's, you know, you can change your revenues if you want to, but if you have pretty solid understanding that you'll be getting in those dollars for sure, there's really no reason to change them. The expenses, however, you're allowed to do a little bit of changes. So how I kind of explain it is, just like your revenues, you've got your actual expenses in '23, that's kind of your baseline. Here's your budget for '24, and we're still chipping away at that. This is what I requested for the year of '25. And let's say that you guys want to make any changes to any line item, that's where you would do it in this last part, so. Yeah, yep, your final appropriation. Typically, I just copy and paste over. There's nothing, once you guys set your levy tonight, whatever that levy is, that does have to go to the county, so we can get tax dollars. But this final appropriation, it can be flexible. If you need to make amendments, then that is okay to do. It's not ever set in stone. It's kind of nice to have it set in stone, just so you know what you're working with, but you can make it flexible. The biggest number that I need from you guys tonight are the levies for each of the funds way up here.
So that brings me to the second question.
Mm-hmm.
So I ran through this whole entire ninety-one pages, and there were probably about eight or nine that had like a levy, and then there's on the right-hand side, you know, it says within limitations, and then at the bottom it says like over limitations. So what does that mean as far as how that translates in here?
Sure, so a lot of those are just going to be not necessary, I guess. The, the only levies that I'm asking you guys to set tonight are for these five areas right here. Yep, one is general fund, the second one would be your city share, city share of specials. That's a brand-new fund. I chose to, this is something that we did in Harwood and quite a few other cities do. You separate out the amount of taxes that you guys use to pay for your tax statements, so it doesn't affect your general fund. Let's say that you have to do a huge project that you would typically make a payment out of your general fund for. And let's say it broke your general fund budget, you weren't able to take care of your other expenses. This gives cities the opportunity to levy under a, under a different century code in order to make those tax payments. And there is no limit to this one, so. Whereas with your general fund, there is a limit, so that's where it's kind of nice having this other option. And then your cemetery fund, we're levying for that, your airport and your rec fund. So those are the ones. And the biggest reason why you're seeing those errors on those other pages is just because the formulas are set up that way and I didn't clear it out. So they kind of, they, when the state provides the form, they just do the same formula for everything under, you know, your general fund, your special revenue funds, and your debt service funds. They keep them out of your enterprise funds just because they know that isn't levy required, whereas some of these others can be.
Okay.
So.
Which page is the breakdown of everything coming out of the general? The general one, the one that we already approved? Or what was the one that we did?
Back in August?
Yeah.
That would have been your preliminary for your general fund, and then the other four, city share of specials, cemetery, airport and rec. And there's a few pages for your general. Here, let me scroll through quick. The beginning of your general fund starts on page four with your revenues. And I kept it very basic with your revenues. I didn't put anything in that I thought wasn't a guaranteed revenue source for you guys. And the general rule on quite a bit, aim a hair lower on your revenues, aim a hair higher on your expenses. Unless state gives me a reason to think otherwise. Like, take your state aid revenue. That can, typically we get projections from the state. State projected that we're going to be lower on that for the '25 year, as well as the highway tax out of Fund 201.
So they give you that information or give you kind of an idea?
They do, yep, so then I just do the math for those, for the big ones like that. The other ones, I try to look at your history. Like, for this budget, I looked at a three-year history of what you guys kind of typically spend and looked at what the guys have been spending. There are different funds, out of, you know, and what City Hall's been spending out of the funds. Made the best guesstimation that I could. But yeah, page four would be the first page of revenues, page five is another page of revenues. Page six would be your first page of expenditures for your general fund.
Do we have the page where we, where the proposed employees salaries and all that was?
I didn't put that in here. That's on another spreadsheet over there.
What, the numbers that I used for this?
I used, yep, so those numbers that you saw that night, I plugged all of those into here, so.
I'd like to see the breakdown of that, because I don't think we even look at our, our salaries at all.
Sure.
But some of the reasons that we've already filled out this year, I don't think sixty dollars cost a living and another five dollars, like automatic, I'd like to see that.
Sure, no worries. Is that something that you guys would like to see tonight, or would you like to hold off until next meeting to look at that? I just have to send it over here, so that's all.
Whenever we have to have it. I'd like to look at it before we finalize anything.
You do have to finalize tonight.
You, yep, you do. The budget, the public hearing can be no later than tonight, and you guys didn't really have, you know, another October meeting opportunity, so. And then the final budget has to be in, well, yeah, tonight's the final hearing, and then budget has to be to Glenda by October tenth. So. But yep, you know, kind of like I told Nicole, any of the numbers over here in the final appropriation, they can be, they can be amended per you guys. This isn't including, and I kind of expected that, which is one reason why I didn't do rate suggestions yet for your utility funds. Because that, you know, that's going to be slightly dependent too upon what you choose to do for, for salaries and benefits.
I guess I still stand by the fact that we're, this proposed budget's $200,000 in debt, and I think we need to look at, try and find ways to eliminate some of that.
Could you first clarify again the question that Nicole had? I'm just still not understanding why we don't have estimated revenues on property taxes listed here.
Okay, so you are, okay, that's what you're looking to do to.
Page four.
Yep, page four. Okay, so on page three is the formula to calculate the amount of taxes that you are looking for. You, it's just the way that I do it, and it's the way that the state form is, so you can put in there a number to balance it out. You know, here's where Paul's talking about, page four, right up here. It's just, it's not a number that you put in this portion of the budget. You actually calculate it up in here for the amount of taxes that you need. The amount of taxes that I'm proposing, here, I'll zoom in. Whoop, shoot, went too far. There we go. The amount of taxes that I'm proposing is $450,891.30. That is seventy-two point two seven mils. Last year's budget, you guys levied $440,677.92 for a difference of $10,213.38 additional this year. This formula, it takes, it tries to give you a screenshot or a snapshot of everything that's happening. For your gen, take for example your general fund, you have a maximum of 105 mils that you can levy for this fund. Outside of city share of specials, this is the highest one that you can levy out of. It takes into effect your taxable valuation. The value of one of these mils, one of these 105 mils, is one one thousandth of your taxable value. So you take your six million two thirty-eight nine ninety-eight, you move the decimal over to the left three spots, and one mil equals $6,238, give or take, okay? And then you go down the formula. This top section is your expenses. Your final appropriation for all expenses altogether, $862,404. I put in a small cash reserve. You can have a cash reserve up to seventy-five percent of your total appropriations. A lot of cities don't like to go that high right away when they're just starting out, so I thought, well, we'll start a small little number for you guys. We can take it out if you would like to. It's up to you. So your total appropriation and cash reserves, so all of the money you plan to spend, plus all of the money you want to kind of hold over for the next year, $867,404.09. Your cash and investments, based on the, based on the numbers from last year, what you're planning to spend and bring in for revenue this year comes to negative $108,676.20. That's where, based on formulas, this isn't a for sure, but based on the formula, this is where we're projected to start out the twenty-five, yeah, the twenty-five year. Your estimated revenues in outside of your property taxes, now this includes your state aid, different other little revenues, that's $546,660. For a grand total of revenue coming in of $437,983.80. Your levy required in order to pay for all of your expenses that we have in that general fund, plus taking into account the other dollars that you have in, you still need another $429,420. You do get to allow for those who don't pay their taxes on time, that's five percent of what your revenues are, comes to $450,891.30. So if you don't feel like accounting for that five percent, who don't pay their taxes, and there are people that don't, then we can back it off to just $429,420. So my request to you guys is the $450,891.30. You guys can choose to change that though, if you want to lower it, you know, now's the time to be lowering it.
Well, how come at December 31st it shows $404,000 negative?
Where are you looking at?
What am I, I don't know what I'm doing wrong here, but page eight, page nine, excuse me.
Page nine, okay.
It's got total appropriations, revenue over and under, and then it shows on the bottom line, $424. That what's, that's what's going to be in the general fund at the end of 2025?
I gotta look at page nine. Give me a minute. Okay, okay, I have an answer for you, Paul. Because of how this is, because of how this formula works, that's the amount of dollars that we need in order to make the budget work. So remember that, $424, $420, okay?
That's going to come on the $450. The $450 is going to make that up.
Correct.
Correct, yep, so if you go back to page three, $420, $420, I think is what we said. Yep, here we go, $429, $420. So, yep, so that's where that makes that up. And that $420, $420 number from earlier, that's not taking into account the additional five grand that we have calculated in there. So, or that $21,000 for delinquent tax collections. So it's, until you do it a few times, you're, you're kind of looking for, I mean, when you do the general fund, you're kind of looking for that gap that you need to fill, and that's what I'm asking you guys to levy on tonight, and I, I need you to fill that gap.
So just a question, I'm not sure. So earlier when we kind of approved the mill and that, and that information went over to Glenda, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then we kind of get that tax property statement in the mail, right? So how does this filter into that equation? Because we, I think we kind of approved it of a certain thing, and now we're adjusting it, and we just can't go higher obviously than below, right?
Correct.
How does these numbers filter into that process? I guess my, my mind isn't wrapping around that part.
Sure, good question. So how this connects to that estimated property tax statement is, when you look at your estimated property tax statement, you have your different taxing entities, and each of those taxing entities are going to have a listed amount of proposed tax dollars that they're going to tax you. Every single home is different based on the taxable valuation of your property and your buildings on it. Which is why everybody's, you know, buildings look a little bit different, or everybody's property taxes look a little bit different. This ties in where you're going to see City of Hillsborough as one of those line items. All of the dollars requested here for all five of these levies are calculated into that one line item. Yep, yep, and if you wanted to get real fun with it, I mean, I'd have a, I would love to have a giant marker board with a whole bunch of colors and just start drawing it out, because that's, that's what I have done in the past too, so. Yeah, yep, because I mean, you could have.
That's where that could change.
Yep, yep, and it, it just depends, like, you know, some people might see a decrease on their homes, you know, on their property taxes, but something drastic could have happened to their property, like if you went from living in a mansion to bulldozing it and putting up a treehouse. Well, that's not even close to the value, you know, so you could have a, you know, a much less tax saving because of that. And on the flip side, if you add to your property, your taxes are going to go up. Then on the flip side, if you add to your property, your taxes are gonna go up. So typically, yeah, yep, you bet.
Any other questions on the budget?
Well, like I said, I want to... I wanna look at the employee salary breakdown and try fixing that first. And I guess that's my main sticking points. We can't just keep going forward spending $200,000 on the whole. We're gonna run out of our revenue, we're out of our saved funds.
Just out of curiosity, where are you coming up with $200,000?
That's when PCNS stepped down.
We, yep, we had looked at... That pertained quite a bit to the utility funds, where that got intimidating. And that's where we need to be really evaluating what our rate structure is and making some adjustments on that.
That's also gonna tie into salaries and our expenditures and everything else.
Yep, yep, you nailed it. I can say there is not a lot for salaries that are coming out of the general fund. Part of mine comes out. We did do a restructure based on what was done in the past per employee. So everybody's paid a little bit differently.
Yeah, but you still gotta be fair with all of them. You can't say, well, we can pay you more because you're out of the general and we have the money there.
Yep.
But I think what she's saying is, tonight, as far as the utility funds and what we set salaries on the utility funds, that can change later. We can't change today. We have to approve and submit to Glenda.
But if we... I'm sorry. I guess maybe here's some more of my question is, so if we submit and approve this, what happens if we later reduce it? Is that gonna still be tweaked? Or are we still gonna... Since it's already been reported to Glenda, is that what's gonna end up getting brought in?
Good question. I know where you're going with that. So whatever we send to Glenda right now, what she's gonna look for is that magic sheet that I keep going up to with those five levies. That's what she wants. So those are the tax dollars that we're going to request from her. And like I said, it can stay up at that high amount, or it can come down. However, with your other funds, if you guys choose to redo salaries and look at your structures and make adjustments, we can make those adjustments. You know, your budget, the only part that's set in stone is your levy. You know, what you're requesting from your taxpayers. Everything else is very flexible. You can make amendments to your budget. It's not meant to be, you know, 100% set in stone. Let's take, for example, the general fund, okay? So there's salaries coming out for me a little bit. I feel like it's about 20% of my salary comes out of there. And then a little bit for my staff. The other employees, they don't have... They don't have it coming out of there because they don't do city hall duties. In the event that you re... You know, viewed the salaries and wanted to reduce those, you can reduce them in the line items. And then if you wanna reappropriate the difference of dollars to another area of the general fund, you can do that.
Got you.
Yep.
I guess then as far as the general fund, there's only... The only other thing that I, personal opinion, think is I... I feel we should eliminate the beautification committee and handle it as commissioners. My thought. I just... I like to know what's going on with it so that when people are asking me, I'm involved and I have answers. So I mean, I would rather the commission handle it.
And that is totally up to the commission. But the reason that that committee was started was that the commission prior did not wanna handle it.
And that's why I said, that's just me. I don't know what you guys think. I personally would rather that we handle it. Whatever you guys...
Beautification may meet once a month, right?
Meet once a month, yeah.
So my thought is that we could just add it on our agenda once a month, that we have a beautification issues. But... I mean, two of us are already on it. So it would just be adding the other three of us getting involved?
You have to remember that beautification is more than just the property that is not... Or complaints that come in. It's also meant for working on projects of enhancement of the community too.
If you all wanna do the work with us, I'm not gonna say no. Trust me, there's a lot to be done on that beautification. If you guys wanna spend the time on it, you're gonna spend time. It's not a hour-long meeting once a month, just so you're aware of it. So I'd love to have more people on there that... But it will involve... We've basically, almost every meeting, we get in vehicles and we drive around and check all the properties. So that would involve getting in and driving in, you know, doing that. And if you wanna do it, you know, so... Or you would have to do it ahead of time yourself. You could do that, I guess.
I would personally just do that if they came in.
But I would.
You go as a group, don't you?
Yeah, we go as a group, yep. So we can talk about them at that time. And we can decide, okay, do these meet the requirements? And things like that, you know, so...
We also go out and look at trees. When we did the tree grant, we went out and looked at potential enhancement areas where we could add things in or what we could do, so...
Was the beautification for just residential? Or is it meant to be something for both the enhancement of commercial and residential?
It's meant for anything in town.
Anything at all?
Yep.
And we really don't have a budget to do much. But we just... Well, that's the thing, there's not a lot of money involved. It's more, you know, maybe more proactive. What can we do for the city? You know, what can we do? Or what can we recommend to powers that be, so to speak, that maybe can do those things? We try to get those people notified and see if we can do things, so... Yeah, I... Boy, if you guys wanna deal with all them things, oh, gladly. I'll gladly step down. You can do it. Because it's a pain in the butt, so... That's why the previous city commission, a lot of them didn't want to, because it...
I'm not asking anybody to step down. I'm just saying, as far as the city commission take it over. Or you don't have the responsibility. At least with the complaints, I... For me, I just have a really tough time when people come to me and talk about complaints. And I don't get an opportunity to be aware of it or see it on my own before I get spoken to about it. I would like to be involved more with that, as far as work.
Well, normally in the past, we had... If there's letters that go out, we sent them out to everybody. But maybe that hasn't been happening. We need to get back on that. There hasn't been any... There was one, I guess they went out last for this meeting. But generally, all that works is if there is a complaint that comes in, it goes to the committee. The committee looks at it. Yes, there is an issue, or no, there isn't an issue. Then it goes to the letter sent out saying, these are the potential issues. Please come to the beautification committee meeting. Or you can fix the issues. And then if things get changed, we don't go any farther. If they come, we try to come up with a resolve or sometimes we'll come up with a plan of this is when they're gonna get it done by, or potentially. And then...
I guess I... That's kinda part of my complaint is that's what I'm getting from residents is they don't like the fact that we, as a city, just don't knock on their door and ask, hey, or give them a call and say, hey, we got a complaint. Your grass hasn't been mowed in two weeks. Do you have any plan of taking care of this? Oh, yep, my mower's broke. Or I was on vacation, I'm sorry, I just got back. They just want a more friendly, rather than a letter, you know?
And I mean, I'll throw myself into that because somebody called complaining about a yard. When I was on vacation, my son's lawnmower broke and it didn't get mowed that day. But it wasn't that it wasn't getting mowed all summer. It just wasn't getting mowed that day due to a lawnmower being broken. And for me, I'd appreciate a phone call to say, hey, do I have to stare at your lawn all day? Because I can say, we're on it. We just don't have the lawnmower at the moment because it's getting fixed.
Yeah, I guess for me, I'd rather just see the complaints come into the office and we try to take care of them. We're talking to them. And if there's nothing, then it gets brought to the commission and then we discuss it. Where my brain's thinking.
And we've had, in the past, I can tell you we've done that. And we've gotten bitten more times than not because we don't have any legal aspect. When you send a letter, it's written, it's sent. Nowhere in that letter does it say that we're demanding things. And even if it's the commission, in order for us to make a decision, there has to be five of us or at least three of us that go make that decision. So if there was something that they wanted to agree upon, they would still have to come to a committee, our commission meeting.
But the thing is, is this committee is already voting on this stuff and made a decision before we have knowledge of it as the city council.
Well, you can say the same thing about planning and zoning too. There's a lot of things that go on in planning and zoning that we don't know about. So that's the next thing too. Now, do we want them to report to us too, you know? So that's kinda the reason that's why we had a... And then the planning and zoning is we trusted them to do it in the same way with beautification, so... And I... But I'll tell you, I don't care. If you guys wanna take care of beautification and be a part of that, you're more than welcome to, because...
In order to do that, you would first have to recall or take out that part of our ordinance.
It's gonna be revoked?
Could be.
That might be an option, rewrite that.
It depends what you wanna do. Right now, it establishes the commission. So if we're gonna just do it, maybe I'll just exit out. I mean, but all those duties get cured.
So the phone call, kind of what you're saying, wasn't really working very well. And then so the letter...
It's easier said, in my opinion, it's easier said than done. It's easier said than done. You know, maybe in your line of business, you deal with people like... You deal with people all the time. You see them, you're calling them about different things that are unpleasant, you know? And sometimes it's not... It's not the nicest thing a lot of times, calling everybody and telling them about this or that.
I mean, I can see probably the blowback on that one. I mean, I appreciated that I got a phone call. But I also was able to tell my side of what the issue was, what was going on.
You got a phone call from where?
Beautification committee.
From me?
But I mean, I appreciated it. But I can see where maybe you get blowback because it would be considered...
Well, I know I've talked to at least one city employee that would be willing to help out with that and trying to make contacts and stuff like that. Like I said, it's just my thought. And right now, I'd like to see something handled differently. I just, I wanna have more knowledge of what's going on because it is something that we get a ton of questions on.
How many hours a month do you think you spend on the beautification?
Not enough, not enough. That's why I say it likes to spread the work around. We don't do enough, period. We don't do it. And, you know, it's... I'm speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for Levi because he... I know he spends way more time than I do on it, so... I hate to see it go back to the way it was. You know, not having people having commitment to it. And then all of a sudden, now we got laws that aren't being mowed and everything. Right now, people I think are being more aware of the fact that, you know, they want a clean town. It's expected of them. I don't think... I've been on the commission since it started and I don't get phone calls from people complaining. So I don't know if they just don't have my number or what, you know, so...
There's a possibility you're doing a phone call like that letter being sent out through that phone call. You know, it says you're gonna give them a letter.
You can talk to them once you find them a letter. I'd like in that situation, if they had a justified reason, hey, sorry, I'm waiting on a park for my lawnmower. Especially when you're on the road and you're trying to get a park for anything, you know?
Like if they don't respond to it and you have the Levi point and have the legal back and you're phone calling verbal stuff, you can't help that.
You still send the letter if you can't reach a verbal leader by a phone call or if they're not gonna cooperate and start the process.
But some people say they won't and they don't.
They give them your... You make an agreement on what kind of a window you're gonna give them. And then if they don't have it done, then you just start. I deal with it all the time where we give people leeway and if they don't stand by it, well, then we follow through.
I think we're getting off. We need to be back on the budget.
So... Well, it's a good budget, I am.
It is. And so, but we're getting in where we need to decide, are we moving forward with it, are we not? Because ultimately, if you got rid of it, it would be...
Page six at the bottom.
Seven?
Page six.
There you go.
Be $2,000.
I think was it written to the ordinance? I don't know if this...
I'd rather see if you want it, if you want to. You just basically have somebody make you change that policy that you're gonna call people. So if you're willing, if you talk to somebody from the city that's willing to make these phone calls, I have no problem if somebody wants to make the city... If we come, if we find properties that need mowing or whatever, I have beautification, I have no problem. If somebody wants to make that phone call, they're more than welcome to do it. And they wanna spend time following up on it, so... I don't have a problem with that. And then going back to, you know, making sure that it gets emailed to every commissioner what's going on. That's what they want.
But we can make sure that happens.
Well, let me ask you this. Some of you both are on it. What about if we had like the policy that we did that, but also before a beautification would make recommendations and it would come to the city council before we take any action and put anything out on city letter guy? So that we have a heads up and are in agreement with the recommendation of the commission.
Do you want to do that same thing on the planning and zoning as well?
No. I haven't heard complaints and I prefer to go with the idea of beautification.
I wouldn't have a problem with it. We're not... We're picking out properties that need to be cleaned. I have no problem with that at all.
Okay.
So we'd probably opt out for the second monthly meeting, right?
Yeah.
We'd meet up with that some.
Yep. Okay. That agreement for everybody?
So who's gonna... You're gonna talk to the person who's gonna call? Or how do you wanna do that?
I'll talk to them again, yeah. But they, so they'd be willing to go door to door when they're noticing stuff.
Okay.
So it's okay for that person as they notice, but not okay for beautification as anything?
I'm just throwing options out there. I'm not saying it has to be done that way.
But I'm just saying, in one case, you're asking for it to come to commission?
No, I never said any of that. I said it's an option. I'm saying the city employees willing to help us with beautification issues if we so asked, or one of them involved. That's all I'm saying. The only way you're getting upset about, Levi, is...
I'm not getting upset. I'm just trying to get clarification because you said it one way, and then you said it a different way.
Don't try to spin my words on me, Levi. All I said is I want more, I'd like to have some more involvement.
Okay. Anything else on that? All right, then we'll go back. Any other changes in the, in the budget?
Just a thought question. The levies, they don't, even if you get amendments and stuff, those levies don't change for like the county levies, right? They always stay a certain, a certain amount?
You're talking about the, like, the levies on this specific one, or county levies?
County levies, like, so at the, like, the airport and the one at the bottom there?
Oh, sure.
Those, those stay like that as, like, those don't change, or it changes upon, if there was something amended or something, maybe change, those totals will change?
Good question. So these two, in particular, the airport and the rec district, they are maxed out at the maximum amount of mills that you can do. I think airport is four and rec district is six. We can go down and look. So those two maximums stay. However, your dollar amounts can change based on the valuation of your city as a whole. So if your value goes up, that dollar's going to go up. Yeah.
So it can change?
Yeah. So I mean, overall, you want to see your taxable valuation increase. It gives cities a lot more flexibility to, you know, get some dollars for your communities. Because, you know, this year, you can say, okay, airport, we're, you know, levying four mills at $24,964. Well, next year, four mills could equal $50,000 if you do, you know, if you double the size of your city. So, yeah, yes, you're welcome.
When the, so our, what we're asking, does, nothing that's paid through the mill levy or through the general fund or that, we, we're not negative on any of those?
No.
Okay.
Good question.
We have enough money coming in to cover all of our expenses on this.
Yes. Yep. The only thing that we're going to have to work on between now and the end of the year is to look at salaries and then set your guys' rates for your utilities. Mm-hmm. Yep. And I, you know, I thought tonight would be lengthy enough of an agenda. I really didn't want to put that on there too. So, and there's still time between now and the end of the year to discuss and evaluate those two items.
Thanks for clarifying that too, by the way. That makes a lot of ourselves.
Mm-hmm. Yes, you are welcome. I'm happy to, happy to help. Yeah, it's an important, important part of your guys' job. So I want you to be informed. So...
Do you need a motion? Are you ready for that? Motion approved?
We need a motion.
Preferably, yep.
I'll make a motion to prove that what we have levied, that amount can't scrape the ground.
Okay. Is there a second?
Oh, nothing, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Jason. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Next item is the handbook. Does anybody have anything to bring forward on that as far as recommended changes? Or printed changes for us to see?
So I, I have maybe just a general question or questions for the commission. Because I was going through some of the pages and stuff, and I think it's page 34 or 35, we've talked about, you know, when we went through like the interviews and the hiring and the pay and stuff, I just was maybe looking for some clarification or maybe some thought into these sections, because it says the city auditor and public works director shall be considered exempt employees and their yearly salary shall be set. Well, we've kind of changed that a little bit. So, you know, we've kind of got two shared public works director positions that are hourly. So I don't know how far back this goes, if public works has always been a salary position, or if we keep these hourly, or, you know, what we do there. And, you know, the salary ranges, I know it was mentioned to do kind of that salary study and pay rate study, which, you know, definitely can look into, but, and then we have probationary increases. And so I think what I was reading was like a 2% after probation, which, you know, I did some calculations, and I'm not so sure if we're involving that 2%. I think we're doing beyond the 2%. So I guess my question is, you know, I don't, I don't want to rewrite this whole entire section and have no input into it on what your thoughts are, or, I mean, do you want something kind of written up, or does everyone review and pick their thoughts and put them together as one? I don't know, I threw that out a lot, but...
Well, there's a couple of sections like that, that we're talking about rewriting or redoing.
Yeah.
And I personally need to see it. So if you've got a thought on something, I'll just report it. I would have to see it. I wouldn't have any input on it until I saw what you want to do.
Yeah. I mean, would it work better if, since I have an idea to write it and have you review it? Because I definitely want everybody's input. I don't want to be the one to decide how it's written.
I think that would be good, is they have a draft of what you would want changed so that everybody can look at it, and then it makes it easier to tweak instead of trying to do it on here.
Drew, will you do something like that too, or?
Yeah, I kind of, I didn't get a chance to make copies, but there's kind of a graph of the break flow chart for the, with the new supervisors that I kind of broke out. It just kind of separates and explains a little bit different how people answer each other now. Obviously, that like, the water people would, for example, would answer to Zach, and then Zach would answer to the auditor and the public, or the water portfolio holder, just stuff like that across the board. It just kind of breaks down how the flow chart is changed now that we have those other positions, and we're putting, getting, Casey's involved with the public works more. So it's, again, it's just a really rough sketch, but just kind of, kind of what I had envisioned. I don't know if it kind of makes sense to you there. Basically, it's sort of, I think, so basically it would work out, but then, like, once you get there, the street supervisor can either go to the commissioner, or to the auditor, or the vote, and ultimately, ultimately, the personnel stuff is being handled by the entire commission. And I didn't get into, I, I agree with Nicole. I'd like to look more at some of that other stuff too, and I just didn't get, didn't get a chance to get through the whole thing anymore.
Well, definitely. It's just, it's still some inconsistencies where we just remove some of the more specific details and definitely a little bit more loose.
I think if something else too, maybe it's in here, Levi, did we ever really kind of describe how we were doing hiring? I thought at one time we talked about that. Is that in here, and I just missed it? Is how, what the hiring process was going to look like?
We had that, when we talked about it one week too.
How, you know, because in the past, a lot of times at the, at the city side, you know, Jim, Jim hired people, you know, we didn't have a lot. He would come, he would, he wouldn't hire them, but he would make recommendations, and then he'd bring them back here. Where it seems like now, we've been kind of, kind of going back a little bit as far as we have been interviewing people and, you know, and sometimes the city, you know, drop has been doing some stuff.
Well, no, it's not necessarily in there, but...
I don't know if it needs to be, or, I think we, if it is in there, we probably should figure that out, you know, that we talked about.
It isn't in here a little bit, but it's on page 14.
14.
Yeah, it's rated after hiring a relative. I assume it's 14. Could page force the 13? Or maybe this was a previous, well, this is one you sent out, so...
And maybe that's not in this.
It wasn't in that draft.
Yeah, I don't think it was in this. I never saw that. I'd seen it before, but I didn't see it in this.
That's the chart?
Yeah. It must have just got missed when it was $10 or something. I don't, I don't see it in here.
What was that?
On 9/23?
This one? This was...
I don't know. I thought this was the one that I got. I put the date on yours.
I did, I did notice there were two different.
Is that, is that one in there?
Let me... Yep.
Or maybe that was in there, and then it got cut?
But if that's your one, it could have something to do with that.
Yeah, because this was 12/5/23, so, yeah, it would be another one. And that one's on the website.
Oh, 1/9/23.
And this is 12/5/23.
So we could have added that in. Because I know we had that discussion on that messed up, because we were doing, we were doing some of that hiring, so, so, so basically, I don't know if we can, I, I know it's a lot of pages, but it makes you, you can even go through them. It is what it is.
One of those for Paul?
Yeah, I'm for everybody.
Okay. I can do that.
So is that, kind of makes sense, everybody that wants changes to write them in, get them to Casey before, the Friday before, in the next meeting, so that she can get them out, and everybody can look at them. The Friday before.
When's the last time you want them? You want to drop in there on Monday morning, do we?
No. 8:30. By Friday morning.
By, you'd want them before that, wouldn't you?
I would love to have them by 4:30 on Thursday. Yes. If at all possible.
You're being generous. I would have asked for it.
You're not wrong.
She's being generous.
4:30, and what is the date on there?
What is that date? The 12?
24th.
24?
Wait a minute. No, it's the 17th.
Oh, yeah, the 17th. Yeah, sorry.
17th at 4:30, please.
4:30 by, so you need them by 4:30 on October 17.
Yep.
In October, right?
Yep, preferably. Because then if you forget, you can still get them in Friday morning. So, yeah.
Does it give you a lot of time to make changes if you need to?
You're not wrong.
Well, I guess you wouldn't make changes anyway. They'd just be recommendations.
Yeah, just submit them.
It'd be more, it'd be more so that we can see the changes before the meeting.
Yep.
You'll just make copies of, you'll just send out copies of what people are recommending, plus the preview.
Yep.
Make sense?
Okay. The next item then is the leadership training for Jay.
Yes, he is requesting to attend the Missouri River Energy Services Supervisor Leadership Training Course. That's different from the one that I'm going to. He attended in my place, like a two, like a day and a half conference down in Sioux Falls, and he really enjoyed being down there and the leadership. And they suggested that this other course would be really good for him too, as a new supervisor. So...
And that's three?
It is. Yep, it's on, like, it, it's always the week after, the week before this lead course that my staff is doing. So...
Is it 3,000 again?
Uh, that, that one's a little cheaper. I think that one is 3,000. The lead course is 3,600.
They pay part of that too?
They will. You have, you have to complete all four sessions in order for them to pay 50% of the bill. So...
I have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve that training for Jay.
Is there a second? Moved by Paul, seconded by Jason. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yep.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. The MMUA safety training?
Paul, I assume that one's, that's not me.
That's not you? Casey?
So, a little bit. Brian had requested to have you guys consider the city of Hillsborough signing up for the MMUA Safety Management Program. It was highly recommended to him from his main journeyman, I can't remember his name.
Roger.
Roger, there you go. Yep, highly recommended from Roger. If you go through the slideshow, it shows all of the, the benefits to enrolling in the program, safety management, job safety, and then there's a training center down in Marshall that I believe they'd have to go down to a little bit. But yeah, it goes through quite a bit of the different, different safety concerns when it comes to the electrical department. And from what I understand, they'd be willing to do training with kind of everybody up here, I think. Not too sure, Zach?
I'm not sure. I remember this.
Okay, that's, that's the way that I had kind of understood it. The host of it, I've got to find it.
And which tier were you in? Three?
Uh, I believe, I believe so, yeah. I believe it was tier three that...
So I'd be curious if this is electrical only, or if it's benefit, benefits for everybody? Because like bullshit comes in with safety training free.
Sure. I might have to dig into some emails a little bit more to see what the cost was. Hold on just a second.
I see what the cost was. If it was a tier three, it was 21,000. For four days a month.
Is this something they do every year, you know, Casey?
It is. Um, you know what, actually, per this email that they sent, they, I'll just read it really quick. Happy to visit Hillsborough to explain the benefits of the MMUA safety program. So they'll come up here and talk about it if you'd like. They said that a possible starting point, this would include 12 visits per year. It would be tier two with one day of safety service per month, and that would be $14,930. This price is projected to increase 3.5% beginning January 1. So, 12 visits a year, and that would be tier two. So, based off of that, you can check out the spreadsheet too.
I would like to learn a little bit more about it before we...
I would do.
Should I invite Mike to come and talk to you guys at your next meeting?
If he's willing, yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. All right. The next item... All right, uh, the next item then, unless anybody has something else on that, is the water plant performance evaluation. And Zach, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Should we do all that for you?
Yeah, I guess so.
I kind of forgot. I'm sorry.
So what we're gonna do, all of the water, I think it's, is, um, kind of a performance evaluation of the whole plant and maybe just operating like a, um, I would work with, uh, Q Rain and Q, the A to S, ladies of the land engineer who designed the plant. And, uh, Q their in-house, uh, R O, uh, specialized specialist, um, kind of specialized with R O side stuff.
The brains of the operation.
Yeah.
When it comes to water. When it comes to water.
We'll add those to our plant to, uh, talk about some, some stuff, go through the plant and, um, see what I should be doing better, or, or if there's any concerns, whatever. They kind of suggested this whole, whole evaluation of the plant, um, to try to highlight any issues we got and, uh, try to be a little bit more efficient on stuff. So, um, it's, uh, it'd be an hourly basis, um, but the, the estimate was about twenty-one thousand is what they recommend doing. Couple, couple of process, if you would, whenever we want to start that, so. Depending on busy Q is, with all his, uh, it's a, it pretty, sounds like it's a pretty common practice among other R O facilities. They do consulting through, through their engineers and stuff, look at numbers and this would be, like I said, a kind of performance. Look at the whole big picture and then get them up to be, uh, what we've been doing in the past and then what we can be doing in the future. Part of this bettering.
Did he say the...
We haven't had one done.
We've never had one done, no. It, it all, it's, it's kind of a, a case by case. Some plants do a five year or a ten year, you know. It's been ten, twelve years since the last move, so we're past that ten year.
You know much about this, Steve?
Um, not too much about water, but, uh, you know, part of it is just evaluating the R O system and how it's running. I know that a few years ago, they swapped out the, the R O filters and their different filters that were originally designed in the plant. So then, said it added some like, uh, additional energy consumption to...
Thinking, sorry.
Some additional energy consumption to run the new filter. Q's gonna kind of look at all that and kind of come up with the best practice for, for the best way to operate it and then kind of do a little training.
And the reason I ask that is, is would they, would they find deficiencies on things that we're maybe doing or spending money on per se? That maybe we shouldn't be, or more efficient ways of doing things that could potentially, you know, you're paying twenty-one thousand, but maybe they say, well, you don't need, you save a total chemical, could save a lot of money. If we're, if we're doing something that we don't necessarily need to do? Do you ever run into that, or where they actually find things that plants are doing that really are maybe not necessary?
You know, a lot of it's evaluating.
More the other way.
Chemical feeds and stuff like that, just tweaking it all that to work the best, even more stop, um.
Will they tell us, like, um, when we should be replacing things again and kind of an outlay plan of the next five years, next ten years?
The way I look at it is, we've gotten most of our advice from manufacturer rep and, uh, it's also we buy our product. External opinions would be good in my opinion. That's another way of looking at it, so.
Wayne's also gonna be a designee at Central's plant and Jason to it when they, do they add on or... So he's, he's pretty familiar with all that. He's the one who designed the ground force wastewater plant, or a city or water treatment plant.
You guys want to think about it, or would you like to make a decision tonight? It would be...
Obvious, like a lot of questions, where would the twenty-one come from?
It would come out of the Water Treatment Fund, which would be a split between us and East Central.
East Central is gonna do a split with it?
Well, we have a...
They pay for a portion of our expenses over the water plant.
So they pay fifty?
Forty?
Or forty?
Sixty, sixty, forty or something.
I think it's forty.
I think it's forty two.
But it also depends on what they use.
They'll get total usage too, so.
What do you think, Nicole?
I mean, I kind of like when he said, you know, when you kind of get a second opinion. I like the second opinion, but being ten years old, I... You know, before you get a evaluation, I kind of, the other side of me says that he does such a good job out there. Why we need an evaluation, you know, so, but I get that.
Then I look, then I look at the fact that this guy's willing to even learn more.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Be better, you know, so.
No, I know, I know what I know, but I got a lot to learn up there. Just, just gonna help with that.
What are your thoughts on the money side? Mar, haven't you, have you got a chance at crunching yet?
Well, we, at, at least once a month, me and Zach and Jay and Roy go over what they have for allowed expenses. Without having an expense report in front of me, I'm sure we could figure out a line item to take it out of, out of the water fund. You had quite a, quite a bit left in your expense.
And I, I know there was a big chunk of, of engineering fees. I think some of that came out recently, but, uh, there is, I think, quite a bit of money in there.
Zach has been pretty good at calling and saying this is a little more than what I was looking for. This needs replacement and so it wasn't really in our budget. Is it okay if we do that, so?
Yeah, and just, just to get you guys aware, in case you don't know, we meet, um, every single Wednesday over at my office, or sometimes the city shop, depending. And we just kind of go over our weekly plans, um, go over budget after, especially after the second meeting of every month. Make sure these guys know this is what you can spend from now until the end of the year. And just kind of keep each other in the loop on, on what we're doing and what we might need help with.
And a shout out to you, Casey. That's, I hear good things from the guys about that. They're really, it's really beneficial.
Okay, good, thanks.
Well, the one thing I've noticed is they're, they seem to like to getting more aware of the budget and, and what they're spending. They're learning that, you know, that, because I, I don't, you'd never heard things like that so much before. Now they're looking at, well, where can I get this from if I want to take it and stuff like that, if I need it? They're, they're more aware that if they want this particular thing, they may have to give up something else, you know, so. So I think that's, I'm glad you're doing that, so.
We could say that, um, cause I assume there's gonna be a task order that comes out of doing it. So you could say that you want to approve to move forward to this, and then we can sign off on it with the task order later on. Which would be the official where we're taking the funds out of. But moving forward, or we could even just say, yes, you guys want to move forward, and then Steve would get the task order put together for us. Before we sign off and officially say yes. Or you can hold off, either way.
Task order will be similar to what, uh, email was where Wayne had all the, um, categories broke down and how it was rolled out. Was it when you got up on the screen there?
What do you guys think?
He's talking about, Q being the smart guy to come talk about. He's a doctor, he's got PhDs.
And you said he did the ground forks?
He's on Fargo.
Oh, he's on Fargo? But he did do the ground forks one too, or?
Wayne, Wayne did.
Oh.
Oh, Q was probably involved.
But Wayne, or, or Q is, is consultant for R O ground forks.
I can make a motion if you want to talk about it. I'll make a motion, you just approve it. Okay. Move forward with it, as long as, uh, Casey's comfortable with the funds to be there to take from someplace. I'll make a motion to approve this.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole.
Water treatment plant easement agreement.
No, not that.
Performance evaluation.
Evaluation, I went down one to part.
And like I said, until we, the official would be when we sign off on that, so we can find out before then that Casey has, where the funds will come out of. Any other discussion?
Do we need to get East Central's okay on that too, or with the agreement, do they automatically agree to?
Have you talked to them about that?
I, I can get, I guess if we need some form, but they're, they're very on board. They're doing kind of the same relative stuff things. Other, other people looking at the numbers and stuff.
But generally, how...
They're doing the same route.
Generally, it's, it's our plant, we run it, and they, we just split the cost, is generally. But they're pretty well in the loop of what's going on.
I didn't know if it was an automatic thing or we needed to get their blessing to.
Um, at the end of the year, I don't think you went through a true up, have you?
No, not yet.
Yeah, we have those too. Just wait for that. Is there any other discussion? John?
Yep.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Thank you, Zach.
Thanks for all you do, Zach.
Uh, the water treatment plant easement agreement, I don't think we're ready to sign off on it tonight. Steve's got some recommendations for J R and J R. We just got it on Friday?
I did read it. It's pretty bare bones, actually.
Yep, and there's another piece that Steve said that we should sign off at the same time, so.
Yeah, there were just a couple comments I sent to you that, um, and you can, most of them you can work out, but their attorney, it's... A non-attorney, I just read, read through it and I thought, these changes we made, but, um, I had to put that, I had to put that disclaimer in there. And then the other part of it is, uh, they're working on a letter of understanding. And I think you should wait on approval and easement to get the letter of understanding. Cause that's gonna kind of talk about what, uh, what all the improvements are planned on the Hillsborough's plant itself. So it'd be nice to have that, all that kind of in writing before you approve easement to grab the land to them. And they're, they're supposed to have that letter of understanding complete already, but it hasn't, it hasn't shipped out yet.
I don't see anything.
I'm sure you'll see it in the next few weeks.
So we'll move on to the next thing is on the Ryan Steen's property. So, we weren't, we assumed that he was gonna annex in right away, but that's not necessarily the case. It was, it was very vague when it was sent to planning and zoning as well. But basically, we need to approve that we are okay so the surveyor can sign off on in subdividing that parcel.
In short, to help explain, it's in the extraterritorial zone of Hillsborough. It's at the absolute corner of town, southeast corner of, just across Post Road. Yeah, and it's, you're just approving that we can put this box there. It's just splitting the parcel off. Pass them out. We kind of did approve it last time, but I actually have the survey in front of me, so you can see. It's just taking that quarter section already has five or six odd results on it. But the surveyor here was normally in the city, which is approved as a subdivision, just so they know what's going on next door. Doesn't change anything, still has all the rules, the same things applied, just says.
Probably township involved or any of that stuff.
The township could be involved, or because it's in our zone, that's why we approve it as this, within a mile of our city boundaries.
Township gets the taxes off of it because it's on city limits, though.
Correct, yeah, yeah. This doesn't change anything, legal utility, anything outside. It's really just saying, we're okay, as I said, in this box there. We're just splitting a parcel off near the city.
Um, and which, we did talk about, and you guys kind of said, yes, we'd move forward. Looking at it, we don't own, we can't service the water and we can't service electrical. But, and we pre-did, portrayed that to Ryan, and he's, I said, but we could look at if he wanted to tie in the city sewer. I said, ultimately, it's up to you guys in the past. And the other property, when that one went in, we split the cost. I said, but that's not a guarantee. You would have to come to the commission to get approval on doing that. But he wanted to know kind of a price, so Steve was gonna look at seeing what it would, estimated cost of, to put it in there, so.
It's too east of our means.
But we do need a motion to approve the, um, I'll refer to J R, how to...
Say the Steen's subdivision five.
Approve the Steen's subdivision five.
So what's, what's, if you don't approve it, what's that? Just, just asking.
Well, but in the same way, we're seeing they call an odder's plan. Also get it at the end of the day. It's just the nicety that the surveyor did here to have the city approve it, make you aware. Other cities have stricter standards, but I'm having far more of those. I don't know of a small city that does.
So the ultimate goal here is for them to...
Are you guys a lot stricter?
Are you doing a development out there then?
I believe so. I, I don't know what exactly.
We'd make it be in city limits.
Unfortunately, what he had said is, right now, they're just looking at themselves building out there. There's no plan for any other building.
I guess I'm just kind of wondering why the tie with the city.
Cause it's in our extraterritorial zone.
Oh, so we're just, so we're just saying that they can do that.
And that's part of the extraterritorial. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Paul makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by John. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. And last item under new business would be how, if you guys want to move forward on text my gov, or would you like to postpone on that? And think about it.
My two cents, honor, is if we, if we don't go ahead with them, we have to figure out what we're gonna be doing to notify citizens if that's an issue. You know, I didn't, I didn't think it was with the app, or with Facebook, or the city, but obviously, that's not getting it done. So we have to, to me, we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna use as the go-to, that if somebody says, well, I didn't know about this. And then I can say, well, do you have this app? Do you have this, my text my gov? Do you, are you on Facebook? Where, I, I think we have to figure out a main source for getting information out to the public. Whatever that might be, that's up for debate, but we gotta find one. Not that we can't still put things on Facebook or things like that. We have to have something that, that if, if somebody says, why didn't know anything about that? Well, we've got all of our official information out here. That's, so if you don't, if you don't get that way of getting that, you're not gonna get all that, that official information.
Well, and you're right, there's, there's a lot of means of communication. It's which one are you on at that time? What one are you not on? I, I'd like to see a lot more of announcements on that announcement board. Because it is a pretty good stopway point for a lot of people. Is it the end all be all?
No way.
Not, you know, does it help? Maybe, um, so I, I agree. What is, what is that solution that...
And we have, we have, we have to figure that out. We just, we just have to, we can't.
Do you know how many people are using that current app that we have?
I was gonna say, what's the deal with the current app that we have?
So the, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I could find that out. The app that we have, it is a free app, um, but it's only free as long as grand dollars keep paying for it at the state level. They tie it in with Health and Human Services is what they do, so some of those random... Some of those random, um, notifications that you get off the app that you're like, what is this? There's no way the girls would have sent this out. It's coming from the app producer, just to stay typically in guidelines with the grants that they get, so.
I guess my only concern is if they're already not using the free app, it's gonna make me use this. I don't know. I don't know how you get, I think it's kind of an age thing.
A lot of us can't get that free app on our phone.
But it's also, we, we, and I talked to the guy at the shop too, is a lot of it is, it seems, it seems like people won't look at an app. They won't go on Facebook or this, but everybody seems like they always look at a text. You know, so, you know, if we had to pick all these generations together, it seems like from twelve to sixty, they're still texting. So, maybe that's the route we look at going.
Which the girls can, there is, and it, on teams, they're able to text out through that system. Which they were using it, I think they, Abby is the, the most, cause she texts the guys and a few other things. So, we just have to work...
So we just have to work on that system. If you wanna go that route, that's included in what we do, so.
Yeah, yeah, the biggest difference is just that.
It doesn't do the geo.
Yeah, it doesn't do the geo and then it doesn't do the, um, like that automatic response stuff that.
It actually does.
Does it?
If you, if you program it.
Show me how. I'd be.
So I guess my curiosity is, um, you know, what are other towns doing? Like, I'm, I'm curious, cause there's gotta be media and like communication means all or so.
I talked, I talked to, uh, to the, the guy that used to come up here, Sam from Barnesville. He said they use Facebook.
And that works well for them?
Well, that's what they use. Now, whether it works well or not, I didn't ask them that much. I didn't ask them if it works well, but.
I think that ever works well for each city.
Right.
And I think it depends on your generations that are in the city and so.
Well, and, and to me, it's more, if, if you want the information, you may, I may not want to be on Facebook. Well, then you've decided to not get official notifications from the city Hillsborough. Maybe you need to have your spouse be on it and share that with you. We can't, we got, we gotta pick something and you have to decide yourself, do I want this information or not? You know, same way with the app. So I don't want any more apps on my phone. Well, then don't get mad at the city if their official way of notifying you is through the app or through this. You know, if we, but if we don't narrow it down to this is the official one, you know, then we got the girls going on four, five and what's gonna happen next, but assuming we're gonna have ten of them, that they're spending time putting all this on. You know, and, and I'd rather have the one go-to that I can always say, yeah, what did you, are you, do you have this on your phone? Are you getting the text my gov or whatever it is? Because then I can, that, that gives me the opportunity to say, this is how we do it. And that's what I do with the app all the time. Well, do you have the app? Well, no, what, what's the app? And now I can explain to him how to get the app, how to use it, and now they get that information. But if I don't have that one thing, what am I gonna tell him? Well, are you, are you on Facebook or you on, you know, I'd rather have just one thing that we can, that's our primary go-to. So, and like I said, I.
And that, that, I mean, it makes it hard for the office, I would assume, because it's like, okay, it's like a checklist. Did I put this out on Facebook? Did I put this out on, you know, or did I put this on, you know, so it's like.
And they can still do that.
You know, it, it takes time.
But they, if they're, if they're busy, they can put on the one and it's done, they don't have to worry about getting on every one. So, but. I, I don't know if anybody has thoughts on anything that they've seen or used or, I don't know.
No, having that one that everybody knows, you know, if you, like even myself, everyone's, someone shows up on the app. Everyone's, someone shows up on the app, but, you know, I thought, oh, I think Facebook and then something else to do today.
Um, we'll do Instagram on occasion, um, and that's just kind of for more of the fun, the fun ones. But, um, yeah, it's, it's the app and Facebook right now. And it's, it's kinda one of those, we wanna get out enough info so people know to look out for, you know, our notifications, but we kinda, we try to ride that balance where, you know, too much, you're just gonna ignore it. Yeah, so it, I don't know, it's hard.
Part of the incollegiate act of too, like with that street project, maybe, you know, it would have been something like a HBA, we send this out to the businesses. They all get, know what's going on, maybe, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, and that was something.
Think about that stuff, you know, at least, I don't sometimes think about it.
Yeah, and that was, you know, like there, that was something that we got notification the day that they started putting up poems. You know, it was really quick and it's like, well, go to Facebook to find out more details, please.
Well, can we agree that texting seems like it's a good form of communicating with people or not? I, I don't know, I.
I know Jay prefers phone calls. He's not, not really as much of a texter.
No, but this, I'm talking, I'm talking, this is for residents of Hillsborough.
Right, right. I'm just saying it is, is a case of announcement wise, um. I, I don't know.
Would you guys like to think about it for another?
Oh, I just, I feel like we have so many ways already that we get it out there and how much more can you? Help them and how much more money can you spend? Is, is it gonna be worth it and?
But, but I think we'd get rid of something. We, we'd have no.
Are we gonna get rid, are we gonna get rid of anything that's costing us money so that it's gonna be a wash?
We're not really paying, right now we've been using this free stuff, right, so.
So yeah, that's my thing, though we just approved a hundred and eighty thousands for switch over to Tyler Tech. Now if we're proving money for this, I, we just never feel like, we never sit down and figure out our money and.
I don't. No.
What's that?
You could send it in their utility bills.
Cause obviously the way we're doing it isn't working. Either we're not promoting it enough, we're not doing enough, because people are complaining, so.
I don't like that one, like, I forget, the first one you just made the comment that boom, all of a sudden they were in town, we didn't have much of a heads up ourselves. You know, that, that one was a fluke.
That one's, uh.
And, you know, you hope that, that doesn't always happen and you respond accordingly, you know. Is what it is, so.
And do we just do a better job of pushing out the app? You know, cause I, I, I don't think we've ever done a real great job of pushing out the app.
I guess I don't know. Yeah, I don't know what was done in the past. Typically, well, we had the same app in Harwood and like they gave us bookmarks, um, coasters like for the restaurants, um, you know, you can put it, there's tons of social media things, but that's the other thing, if you don't look at our social media.
Like do, do you remember a resident saying, no, that they did get the announcement on their app? So I, I remember them asking somebody else, like, well, it's on the app, and they're like, what app? So I, maybe not everybody is aware of it.
I don't think they are. I don't think they are.
The night we did mosquito strain here like a month ago, somebody was asking what, what was happening.
Yeah, what's that load truck going by?
Strain mosquito, that's what they put out on the app and everybody was like, whatever.
Yeah.
So posted on there what it was.
They didn't try to push, I mean, you can always come back to this too, you know. Try pushing the free stuff, but if that doesn't work, then maybe come back and revisit it.
Because for all of your instant announcements or, you know, emergency announcements or whatever, this is the app. See if it works first and then you want.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, just so it's officially in there, we'll open up for the, uh, we forgot to open and close the budget hearing, didn't we? So officially, I need a motion to say that you're opening the budget hearing.
I'll make the motion we're opening the budget hearing.
Is there any second, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Is there anybody here to talk about the budget?
Oh, nope. My dogs are going wild at home.
Do I have a motion then to adjourn the budget hearing and adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Moved by Cole, seconded by Jason. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, meeting is adjourned.
I'll sign that.
Right here?
Yep. And this is the one I used to do last week, sign it, but it.
You got it wrong?
It was wrong, I had one ninety, supposed to be one eighty-five. So that went down five grand too.
Starting the like.
Like I'm saying, page of your budget, like your, your expenses, you know, your. Give me the name of the app so I can put it in my story.